The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Crewson, President Reed, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Conway, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Cohn, twenty present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Kathleen Wilder of Lafayette Park United Methodist Church. Pastor Wilder does all kinds of things throughout our community and I think we're very blessed and lucky to have her here to lead us in prayer today. Pastor Wilder?
Thank you. Good morning. I'd just like to take a moment to personally thank President Reed for showing up at my husband's visitation when he died suddenly in April. And that means a great deal to me that he was there. As I was praying about this morning, there were two verses that came to me that I think it's important for us to bring to your reflection. In Psalms 46, it talks about, "There is a city whose streams make happy God's heart. God is in the midst of the city and the city will not be moved." I believe God wants our city to be a city that makes God just rejoice. And we have to capture that vision of being a healthy, beautiful city and living it out to fullness. The other is the Micah six. What does God require of us? To seek justice, love kindness, and walk humbly with God. Let us pray. Most holy and gracious, loving God, you know us better than we know ourselves. You know the power that is within us to do good. And God, we just pray for your anointing to fall upon this place. We give you thanks, oh God, for people who have stood in the gap for their constituents, for people who take stands that are often unpopular, for the good of their people they serve, and for this city that they serve. And so we pray, oh God, today that your power, your courage, your spirit, your light, your truth, your love is abundant in the work of these legislators, that we might seek justice for all in our community, that we might love with kindness, and that we might walk with humility of being in this place to create and impact our city for the betterment. Thank you, God, for working in this community and with these people to make our city be the best city in the world, the one that delights you and that draws people to come to be part of. We pray that everything we do brings honor and glory to you. In your name we pray.
It's a beautiful prayer. Introduction of our guest, introduction of our guest. Alderman from the 23rd?
Yes, Mr. President, a member of the board. I would like to have from Congressman Clay's office, Brian Williams is my special guest.
Alderman from the 26th, introduction?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honor guest today, Mr. Jeff Hines, Keith Taylor, and Todd Hanks of the Carpenter Union Hall. Thank you.
Alderman from the 3rd?
Um, as President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my special guest today, Michelle Duffy from Duffy Nuenberger, who has done all of that development you see as you go over Salisbury from Highway 70.
Oh, welcome, Michelle. Alderman from the 6th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to welcome Ms. Ollie Stewart, the 6th Ward Committee Woman this morning.
Welcome, Ollie, my committee woman also. Alderman from the 4th?
I'd like to have as my special guest, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. President, especially you, Ms. Donna Booker. Thank you. I'd like to have as my special guest, Ms. Ollie Stewart, Ms. Mavis Thompson, and all those of you whose names have not been called, you are my special guest. Thank you.
Excellent. Alderman from the 27th?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to have my special guest, Mr. John Collins, who's the president of the Collegiate 100 at Lincoln University. Thanks.
Alderman from the 16th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest today, 16th Ward Resident Steve Spreck with Communication Workers, and Anthony Lancia with AGUC.
Alderman from the 21st?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a large group of citizens here I'd like to recognize as my special guest. They're all here in support of home prayer funds for seniors, starting with Ms. Shirley Everett. She's the president of the O'Fallon Neighborhood Association. And we'll do all these other ones in a row so we don't have to clap for her. We'll do a clap all at the end. Kinsella Berry, Geneva Richardson, Joan Bassett, Geraldine Hopkins, Roy Miller, Helen Burton, Alicia Allman, Sandra Amadine, Dorothy Mae Bennett, Mr. Lou Moy from the Coalition of Black Trade Unionists, and Barbara Clark.
Alderman from the 1st?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm first of all happy to see Ms. Ollie Stewart here from the 6th Ward, who's always my special guest. But I also have a list of people that I would like to introduce, starting with the 1st Ward Committee Man, Sterling Miller, who's also been my boyfriend for 38 years. The 4th Ward Committee Woman, Norma Leggett. The 4th Ward Alderman, Sam Moore. The 21st Ward Alderman, Antonio French. The 27th Ward Alderman, Chris Carter Jr. And a very special guest for me is a Mr. Chris Carter Sr. And many times in politics and in life, there's a past, a future, a present. Mr. Carter is, for our past reference, is the brother of the late, great Greg Carter, who was the 27th Ward Alderman. He is the son of the late, great Paula Carter, who was the state rep and the state senator. He is the father of the great Alderman from the 27th Ward, who has a donut in his mouth. The Alderman from the 27th, Chris Carter. And in the future, he will be the next 76th District State Representative. And the reason I introduced all these people because we're all here looking forward to working to the great Chris Carter Sr. as our state representative.
Welcome, Mr. Carter.
Also, I want to, also, I would like, I know usually the license collector is your special guest, but I would like to also acknowledge the license collector, Mavis Thompson, as my special guest. She came to a ward meeting of mine a few weeks ago, and a guy brought up a problem that's been an ongoing problem. He's brought this up many times and we've been trying to resolve it. And it's that he had some things stolen and the police told him, well, go over to this shop over in the 22nd Ward that's a retail shop because we know that that is where you can buy stolen goods. And we've, I know that place too because they had an employee who hit my car and ran, and we had to have the police go pick them up there. And several people have told me the police told them that. And so when this, my constituent told the license collector his problem, it's no longer a problem because I found out the power of the license collector, okay? She went there and she took care of that, okay? And that's so important because we have addressed chop shops, we have addressed payday loans, we have addressed where people are buying metal and scrap shops, but we did not, and we've looked at loan sharking and everything, but we've never looked at that a lot of these little small retail shops or resale shops, they actually had stolen goods, so much so that the police refer people to go look for their items there. So I am especially impressed that, I know this guy has been talking about this for the longest and we've been talking to the police, that within about two days this was taken care of. I didn't know the power of the license collector and I am awfully proud and happy that Mavis Thompson is my license collector. And I look forward to working with her for four more years.
Any further introduction? Alderman from the 21st?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have another small group. I'd like to recognize Joe Maxwell, Kathleen Logan Smith, Sarah Martin, Natalie Viall, John Casnov, and Zach Casnov, also as my special guest.
Alderman from the 22nd?
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest, Mr. Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T.
All right, thank you. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, we've been waiting a long time for this. Will you wrap us up?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It's very nice to be here. After the last two years, it's nice for me to be anywhere. I'd like to remind you, today is July 11th. On this day, 100 years ago today, a couple of things happened. Well, actually, more than 100, 110 years ago today, 1804, Aaron Burr was the Vice President of the United States and he shot and mortally wounded Alexander Hamilton in a duel, marking the last time a vice president was let to make a decision on his own.
Before we proceed, I know the comptroller's Chief of Staff, we have seats reserved for the comptroller and the mayor, but it is against our rules that you take that seat. So if you can find a seat, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Alderman from the 17th, you're recognized on approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for the approval of the minutes.
Move by Alderman from the 17th, second by Alderman from the 28th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials?
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes. I have them as honor the mayor, the following correspondents. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Forest Park Advisory Board. The reappointment of Michael Flowers, a resident of the 17th Ward whose term will expire on June 26, 2018. The reappointment of Karen Goring, a resident of the 28th Ward whose term will expire on June 28, June 26, 2018. The reappointment of Michael Murray, a resident of the 28th Ward and whose term will expire on June 26, 2018. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slade, Mayor of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 28th, you're recognized on the mayor's appointment to the Forest Park Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we confirm the appointment of Michael Flowers, Karen Goring, and Mike Murray to the Forest Park Advisory Board.
Move by Alderman from the 28th, second by Alderman from the 24th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Crown Plaza Community Improvement District. The reappointment of Andrew Love, a resident of the 28th Ward whose term will expire on June 15, 2017. The reappointment of Stephen Shum, a resident of St. Louis County whose term will expire on June 15, 2017. The reappointment of Gloria Clement, a resident of Manchester, Missouri whose term will expire on June 15, 2017. A reappointment of Joseph Regeri, a resident of St. Louis County and whose term will expire on June 15, 2017. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slade, Mayor of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 7th, you're recognized on the mayor's appointment to the Crown Plaza Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of the mayor's appointments for the Crown Plaza Community Improvement District.
Move by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 14th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the 1100 Washington Avenue Community Improvement District. The appointment of Erin Johnson, a resident of Kansas City, Missouri whose term will expire on July 11, 2018. The appointment of Chadwick, Ms. Chadwick Schneid, a resident of Kansas City, Missouri whose term will expire on July 11, 2018. The appointment of Stuart Woody, a resident of Kansas City, Missouri whose term will expire on July 11, 2018. The appointment of Patrick Garlich, a resident of St. Louis County whose term will expire on July 11, 2016. The appointment of John Alvey, a resident of Liberty, Missouri whose term will expire on July 2016. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slade, Mayor of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 7th, you're recognized on the mayor's appointment to Washington Avenue Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of the mayor's appointments to the 1100 Washington Community Improvement District.
Move by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 20th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Advisory Board of the St. Louis Metropolitan Zoological Park District Sub-District. The appointment of Neil Perryman, a resident of the 16th Ward and whose term will expire on December 31, 2018. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slade, Mayor of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 28th, you're recognized on the mayor's appointment to the Advisory Board of the St. Louis Metropolitan Zoology Park.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Neil Perryman to the Zoo Board.
It's move by Alderman from the 28th, second by Alderman from the 20th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
We'll dispense with line items 7 through 10. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 112, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the planning commissioner to change the zoning of property from G Local Commercial and Office District and J Industrial District to the J Industrial District in City Block 3956 for property at 3992 Grasshut Street and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 113, sponsored by Alderman Cohn and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel in the most easterly nine-foot portion of Compton, beginning from Fason and extending southwardly to a northern line of the east-west alley in City Block 2855 and adjacent to 424 Fason. Board Bill 114, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel in the northern 15-foot wide north-south alley in City Block 4781, south is bounded by Children's Place, Taylor, Scott, and Euclid. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee?
To the Housing Committee, Board Bill 112. To the Streets Committee, Board Bills 113 and 114. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following board bill was reported out of the Housing Committee, Board Bill 88, sponsored by Alderman Villa, and ordinance recommended by the planning commissioner to change the zoning of property from J Industrial District to the F Neighborhood Commercial District in City Block 3043 for property at 7200 through 30 South Broadway and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
We've a dispensal line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 91, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a release and termination of a revisionary interest in certain property known as 4250 Rear Duncan, 4240 Rear Duncan, 315 South Sarah, authorizing the execution of a quitclaim deed for said property and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 92, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving the petition of various owners of certain real property to establish a community improvement district establishing the South Euclid Community Improvement District and containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill 93, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann and ordinance approving the petition of various owners of certain real property to establish a community improvement district establishing the 1831 through 2000 Sydney Street Community Improvement District and containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill 66, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Arnowitz, and Alderman Schmidt, and ordinance pertaining to the adoption of a policy supporting the practice of trap-neuter return of feral cats and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 94, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordinance pertaining to enforcement of code violations related to health and safety and enforced by the Department of Health containing a penalty clause and an effective date. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 17th, you're recognized on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for the, we approve the perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 17th, second by Alderman from the 20th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. The next, next item on the agenda is board bills for perfection. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill Number 12, Committee Substitute as amended on the perfection formal calendar. We have been working to try to get a good board bill for everybody and this thing really doesn't need to pass out until sometime toward the end of August. So I plan to be working between now and end of August, meeting with more aldermen, the comptroller, the mayor, and everybody involved. So at the end of the day, when we go to the ballot, we have something that the people know is a good bill and if it passes, it's gonna, you know, represent everybody across the city. And I think we're close, but we need to just tweak it a little more. So we'll be back to that one a little later.
So noted.
Board bills for perfection?
Board Bill 95, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance authorizing directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute and deliver a memorandum of agreement for the purpose of providing trash removal services and receptacles at designated metro bus stops by the city's refuse division as specified in a memorandum of agreement for a term of one year in the amount of $200,000 and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of board bills for perfection.
Alderman from the 8th, you're recognized on the perfection of board bill Number 95.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd move for perfection of board bill Number 95.
Move by Alderman from the 8th, second by Alderman from the 26th. Alderman from the 8th, please proceed.
It's self-explanatory.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 1st?
President, members of the board, I rise to oppose Board Bill 95, not the intent of the trash can, but the effectiveness of how it's done. When I came back down here over a year ago, I drove, I'm very much into driving the wards. So, and I'm, most of the ward is the old 20th, so I'm very familiar with it, but I drove it. And I actually had worked with Bi-State as the committee woman of the 1st about placement of benches and where they were gonna have the stops up and down King's Highway. And one of the things that happened is that they put these benches out, Bi-State did, and they didn't put trash cans out. And so what you created was a nuisance and where you have trash everywhere. Because when people tend to sit long times, then they just throw their trash down. It's already a problem with trash. I actually lived by the bus stop and had it put by my house because others did not want it by their houses. And we did it up and down King's Highway between Martin Luther King and Natural Bridge, every other street, because they used to have them at every street. So I actually requested it to kind of keep the calm down. And that means every day, myself and Mr. Miller, we go out two or three times a day. We pick up trash and we also talk to the people about, hey, here's the dumpster right here. So when I saw these places in which they had the benches, which is a good thing, so you're waiting for a bus, you want them, but people use them for all kinds of things. And so I called the street, Todd Walterman, about, hey, why is, why are there trash cans someplace and there're not trash cans other places? And he told me a story about that, what happened with how the money was allocated. And then I called Bi-State because what I wanted from him and from them is where is the list of where these trash cans are supposed to go? Because I had a trash can just right about half a block from where the bench was. You know, what is the rhyme of reason? There ought to be a method. And so when I talked to Bi-State, they said, we gave the money to the city. The city was making the decision The city was making the decision about where the trash can. So, I called back to Mr. Walterman and said, where are these locations? He said he didn't know. I said, don't you pick up these trash cans? Yes. You have to know a location. Um, here we go, year later, still haven't been able to get a location of where you picked them up. So, he said, go and drive around and tell me where you need these trash cans, perhaps we can help you. I drove around my ward. I emailed him a list because here's the thing, with the mayor making it so that we only have street cleaning once a month, which is ridiculous in the places where, uh, people walk a lot, and then you got these benches, you're making North St. Louis look like a trash can, okay? And especially when you don't, you can't tell me where they're supposed to be trash cans. So, I have really been driving all around the city. I see a very unequal distribution of where trash cans are. Now, the thing of it is, I can't say if it's just because the Aldermen got tired of talking to them and bought it themselves, but I can say that we, this is an automated period in life, and there is nothing that we shouldn't be able to produce about the city, like where you pick up trash cans within a week or two. Now, um, when we talked about this in committee, because I am on transportation, I'm on streets, but we had it in transportation, the Alderman from the 8th as the chair did write a letter and asked him to produce that list by the end of, uh, July. Um, but I have a problem with voting with something, I'm voting for something, because in the committee, what they talked about, uh, uh, the mayor's representative, Mr. Golly came in and said that they would make decisions where the trash cans, how are you gonna make those decisions? What is the criteria? We often don't wanna have criteria about anything because then we can do willy-nilly, uh, kind of who I like, who I don't like. I want a criteria. There is, and I'm talking north or south, because they gave us a list of six, uh, or seven trash cans that ByState was already taking care of. They were all on, in North St. Louis streets with two being at Delmar. Well, I don't think that's fair to South St. Louis. I don't want, uh, North St. Louis to have something that South St. Louis doesn't have, a chance to have the equal opportunity. And I also don't want that to happen for South St. Louis to have it in north, and I don't want the central corridor and downtown to have what north and south don't have. I'm not looking for unequal. So, I asked that question about, well, why is it just these five or six North St. Louis? Don't you have any in, in South St. Louis that you take care of? Well, there was no one there. Everybody says, oh, I can't answer that. There was no one there to even talk about the trash cans. It's just, oh, we're gonna allocate some more money, but we're gonna put them some places where you let me know. Well, that makes no sense to me. Um, there are certain streets that most certainly get more traffic than any trap, uh, six streets in the city. I don't need what, oh, my residential street, but most certainly Grand, North and South Quarter, they need them almost, if not at every stop, most stops if you got a bench, Grand would need it. And I don't have Grand in my ward. King's Highway would need it from Gravoy all the way down to West Florissant. And I could say wherever you have a bench on King's Highway, you need it. I could see going east and west, Delmar having it. But we most certainly ought to have some kind of plan. And if we do have a plan, then it ought to be transparent and open to everyone, and you shouldn't have to be asking for over a year for a list of where you pick up trash cans and not be able to get it. So, I am all for more trash cans, but if it's gonna still be, we don't know where they are, and we can't tell you where they're gonna be repla- placed, and we can't tell you the plan of how we're gonna do it, that's what's wrong with this city, okay? That we ought to have a plan that we can talk to people about and implement it. In the years that I was on the Board of Aldermen before, I had plans for my ward, so people didn't have to, they were nervous at first, but once, because there's always gonna be a first and a last, so I know that. But once we put the plans out how the trees were gonna go down, we planted three or four thousand trees, once we put the pla- plans out about the dumpsters, the light, the street paving, once people saw in all parts of the, uh, ward that they were going to get theirs and that somebody was gonna be first and somebody was gonna be last, but there was a plan for it, and then that plan was implemented, they felt much more comfortable. And that's why we have to do that in a citywide effort. We can't just say, what I wanna do, just give me the money and then we'll decide later about where it goes. So, for that reason, I voted against it, and I still oppose it. And, um, when we were in committee, Alderman Cohen, at the last, he was very shaky about his vote. He finally voted for it, but he was very unhappy because he talked about at Chippewa, the parts of Chippewa that he represents, and, um, and that he had been waiting for his trash cans for a long time. Alderman Moore, I think, had to purchase some of his own trash cans because he was unhappy with not having trash cans, okay? So, if we're gonna do this, and, and, and this is gonna get passed, it is ridiculous that we keep bringing forth things and then we tell people, oh, just pass it out and then we'll get back to you next time. Because Mr. Cohen, Alderman Cohen said that that's what he was told, I wasn't here the last time, when he was on the committee before, and that they actually had to hold up some, threatened to hold up some ByState money, um, from, I guess, maybe Ways and Means or some other place to be able to get some accounting and some truthfulness about where things were and what they were gonna do in a plan. And I, let me say this, I understand even with a plan, they don't keep it. Because I was here when MetroLink started, it's now called, uh, you know, it's, uh, when MetroLink started, I'm sorry, but it started out as ByState. And at that point, when we decided to do MetroLink and do the trains, they promised us that we were gonna have a north and south quarter and that we were gonna have, uh, MetroLink in North St. Louis. I'm back now, I was gone 10 years, I'm back here, I've been back here a year, that's, they're talking about improving other stops, they're doing all kind of money, but they're not even serious about the north and south quarter that I, that I can see. And so, for me, um, I, there's nothing that ByState can say to me unless they got something written down, and we have a contract with them, because they don't seem to keep their word, and they don't seem to be concerned about, uh, North St. Louis for sure. And, um, I'm equally disappointed that Mr. Walterman could not give me a list of where the trash cans were being picked up in over a year. And I had told representatives from the mayor's office, I found all my emails now, I will give to them the emails, I will send them the correspondence that I'd sent to them, I took pictures of the trash. There is no reason to have a bench without a trash can. If you're looking for people to have a place to sit down, then you're looking for there to be trash, and that we ought to be able to have that picked up, because that makes no sense. And all you gotta do is drive right at King's Highway and Aldine, and it is horrible looking. The entry into my neighborhood is just horrible looking. And if you go up to, uh, 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 King's Highway on the other side of I-70, go up and down there, they need trash cans almost at every stop. And if you go on, uh, Natural Bridge, that is, I, I know the Alderman from the 21st has talked about it a lot, but every week I drive and just take pictures of that, it is awful. It is not because the people in our community is throwing trash down. People travel through certain communities, and that ought to be, we ought to have a program for board, uh, for boulevards, for large streets, and it ought to be different from a small street. I don't really care if Maffet Place gets, uh, trash, uh, I mean, gets streets cleaning, because I can sweep in front of my own place. But when you have large streets like Natural Bridge, King's Highway, Grand, then you need to have, uh, certain attention to that. And it shouldn't be, oh, once a mon- once a month, that's ridiculous. And it makes the neighborhood looks bad, and that's what makes people wanna move away from it. The people who do right, who don't ask for anything, who pay their taxes, who look for us for some kind of leadership and fairness in the way the taxes are allocated, are not feeling that. I do wanna end by saying, I wanna thank you, Mr. President, for putting your board bill on the informal calendar. I think that is a stroke of leadership, and that gives everybody a chance to work on things. And I am, um, going to continue to, uh, oppose any board bills that come before us that are not fair. And, uh, Board Bill 95, as it is now, is not fair because it doesn't have a plan and it doesn't tell us who's gonna get trash cans. And you can't even tell me where you already got trash cans. I can't trust you with my future money if you can't even tell me what you did with my past money.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion on Board Bill 95, perfection of Board Bill 95? Alderman from the 4th?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. If you ride through my ward, you will see red, black and green trash cans throughout the ward. And the reason why we put those trash cans out there, the Housing Association bought those trash cans, because we were not getting what was promised us from ByState. The utility came down Martin Luther King and took out about three to four of the trash cans, extracted them from the concrete, but left the concrete attached to the bottom of the trash can. So, now they just sit there and wobble around and wobble around. They're not emptying the trash cans, and then the vagrants go in the trash cans looking for cans, aluminum cans, throw the trash everywhere. And instead of trash cans, what I propose is that we get the, the security pylons, one at each bus stop, in the direction of the traffic, so that that way you can protect the patrons, the people that are buying the tickets and riding ByState buses, they need protection. We got several occasions, incidents where people legs have been maimed, people have been killed waiting on those buses, and we need more protection of the bus stops instead of the trash cans. We have trash cans in my ward, and if they, again, like Sharon Tyers said, if they tell us where they are and be fair about it, then I can know, I would be more than happy to go along with that.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 8th, you recognize the close on Board Bill Number 95, perfection.
Um, I thought it was fairly self-explanatory, so I'll take 30 seconds. This is a bill for us to accept. Metro is giving us $200,000, so we have an extra crew to pick up these trash cans. They are giving us $200,000, and the two people that spoke against the bill do not want that $200,000 to put on an extra crew to pick up the trash. The decision is yours, should we accept the $200,000 so we can have an extra crew to pick up those trash cans or not? I fully support it because emptying those cans and making sure that we get all of them emptied and regularly and underwrite what the city's budget is, is important to me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 11th, I've already recognized him to close on the issue.
I would like a request for roll call.
Oh, okay, perfect. It's been a request for roll call on the perfection of Board Bill Number 95. Madam Clerk, it's been moved by Alderman from the 8th, seconded by Alderman from the 20th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 95. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Ortman, I'm sorry, Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Thank you for welcoming me up in the seat yard.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Florida.
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman French.
What is he so fast?
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Cruzen.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman French.
Aye.
Alderman Cone. 24, aye votes, four no votes.
By your vote, stay in the motion of Alderman from the 8th and perfected Board Bill Number 95.
That's the extent of Board Bills for Perfection.
Alderman from the, Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of moving the following board bills to the third reading consent calendar, Board Bill 91, 92, 93, 94, 95 and 66.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 9th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers.
Aye.
Alderwoman Flowers.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderwoman Young.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Florida.
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman French.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Cruzen.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman French.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
27, aye votes, one no votes.
By your vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the 22nd, move the aforementioned bills to the third reading consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please place the aforementioned bills on third reading consent.
So noted.
And it's been a request from Alderman to move 95 from third reading consent to the regular third reading calendar.
So noted.
Third reading consent.
Board Bills 63, 82, 51, 70, 76, 20, 71, 72, committee substitute, 73, 74, 75, 77, 78, 79, 80, 48, 91, 92, 93, 66 and 94.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar. Third reading consent.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for third reading consent.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 6th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers.
Aye.
Alderwoman Flowers.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderwoman Young.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Ald- Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Florida.
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman French.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Cruzen.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Flowers.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman French.
Aye.
28, aye votes.
By your vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the 17th and third read and finally passed the aforementioned bills, third reading report of engrossments.
Board Bill 55 sponsored by Alderman Cone and ordinance to repeal chapter 15.86 of the, of the St. Louis Revised Code relating to fortune tellers.
Alderwoman from the 6th, you recognize on third reading and finally passage of Board Bill Number 55.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for third reading and final passage of Board Bill 55.
Moved by Alderman from the 6th, I'm trying to second on our motion, seconded by Alderman from the 13th. Alderman from the 6th, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we, that we, um, third reading and finally passed Board Bill Number 55. There's been a request for previous roll, there's been an objection to previous roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers.
Aye.
Alderwoman Flowers.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderwoman Young.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Florida.
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman French.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
No.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Twenty-seven, aye votes, one no vote.
By your vote, you stand the motion, Alderwoman from the sixth, and third read and finally passed Board Bill Number Fifty-five.
Board Bill Number Ninety-five sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute and deliver a memorandum of agreement for the purpose of providing trash removal services and receptacles at designated metro bus stops by the city's refuse division as specified in a memorandum of agreement for a term of one year in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the eighth.
I would move for a third reading and final passage of Board Bill Number Ninety-five.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighth, second by Alderman from the ninth. Alderwoman from the first, you recognize.
Members of the board, uh, the Alderman from the eighth spoke at the perfection part of this bill saying that, that we were being given money. We are not being given any money. That's our tax dollar money, okay? I pay lots of taxes. Nobody has given us anything. Just if it doesn't be, if it's not used at this time, it'll be used for something else. So I reject the notion that somehow the city is being given something because my constituents pay taxes. What we are doing is we're putting a pot of money from one set of tax dollars over to another set of tax dollars or taxes, and, um, we have to decide how that is going to be spent. But somehow that we want to reject money, I don't want to reject money coming to this city, but I don't want money just to come into this city and then be spent unfairly because I have to hear time after time after time after time from the people that I represent, why is X, Y, Z downtown, the central court or whatever, getting these things and you're not? It's because the way we do legislation, the words in this legislation make a difference. If we wanted to, we could make things very specific, and when we start to try to do that, that's when we get a lot of pushback from very different people, okay? We can hold people accountable. We don't hold people accountable. We don't want plans. We want it to be fluid like this so that then we can just give it to our friends and our cronies instead of doing something that's in the best interest of all of the city of St. Louis. So again, we are not, I am not voting no because I don't want money to be given to the city of St. Louis because there's no money that's given to us. There's no rich person that said, "We're just gonna let you rain down and give you here." Bill Gates didn't show up and say, "Here, I'm giving you a million dollars or a billion dollars," okay? These are our tax dollars, and we have to, we're down here to, to make sure that they're allocated fairly and consistently and in a way that makes sense. So that whole characterization from the Alderman from the eighth is ridiculous to me, and it is in fact money that belongs to all of us because we all pay taxes, and what we want is a fair accounting of how this is spent. And if we can't get a fair accounting of this, and then we get one on July the thirty-first, why are we gonna be able to get it on July the thirty-first and we couldn't get it last July thirty-first? Why couldn't we have it on our desk today? Why don't you want us to have no things before we vote for it? Why do we always end up getting things after we vote for it? So because they're very often unfair. When I was down here consistently for twelve years, I kept track of all that thing, those things, and it's real easy to map, and it's real easy to keep a running total of what's going on. So I was gone for ten years, I haven't been able to do that, but I'm doing it again. And so when I request that, it's because it goes into my little database so that when the Alderman from the eighth gets up and makes ridiculous statements about whether something is fair or not and attacks Alderman from the twenty-first about park money, that, that we know that the reason he's doing that is because that's a cover-up because he's getting what he needs and he just really does not care about what happens in North St. Louis, okay? And so to try to say that he cares about all of the city, that has not been his stance, that's not been his position, and to try to indicate that the Alderman from the fourth, myself, the twenty-first, or the twenty-seventh, or somehow against getting monies into the city is just a false accusation, and that's why I want to get up here and say, "That's not true. We all pay taxes and we want a fair allocation." And I'm opposed to this because you haven't been able to show me that this is going to be a fair allocation and that it wasn't, you cannot show me that it was a fair allocation in the past.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the eighth, you recognize the close on third read and finally passage of Board Bill Number Ninety-five.
I can see why every time the Alderwoman from the first gets up, she has to tell us how much she's doing in her ward because none of the other twenty-seven of us really do as much as that and fight for every dollar in our ward because if we, if we got up and talked our story and our constituents' plight, this meeting would be over by about next Friday when we're ready to go again. And, you know, I appreciate that all of you work just as hard or harder than the Alderwoman in the first. My tendency normally is, and all of you that know me, even the assembled masses, is I don't play to the crowd. I represent everybody. Unfortunately, the Alderwoman from the first, only he has one style of politics. That's divide and conquer. Mr. President, that's what she said, north and south. I don't play that game. The point is, this is funds that go to Metro, and it's done by different legislation.
Alderwoman from the first, please state your.
Please, uh, he's, um, he's getting back to Metro because first he's mistaking me because, uh, there is a tape. So if you quote me, quote me. So tell him to talk about, the reason why I talked about it is because he said that we were voting against money coming into the city.
And he's, he's going back to Metro. Alderman from the, you understood where we were going with that, and you stuck, you went back to Metro, so go ahead, stay on that, please.
Good morning again, Mr. President. The, the significant thing is, Metro has a different tax base. Their funds come from different sources and different legislation. Their authority, um, is, is set up distinctly different, um, for the area. Their taxing capability is generally sales tax, and yes, we all pay sales tax, um, and that is allocated. The key thing is, those are funds that the city, this city government is not personally entitled to or entity-wise entitled to. It's additional funds to put the extra crew on. I know we all work hard for our constituents, and I appreciate what you do for your constituents on a weekly, monthly basis. And if you do want to get up and tell me how hard you work every Friday, at least one or two other people at a time, I'm more than happy to listen because I'm so proud of what I've done in the eighth ward that I could sit here and talk for an hour and a half each Friday, but under the, the new auspices of Steve, as an Alderman, I've been pretty quiet down here. So I'm not gonna tell you what I've done in the eighth ward because those residents know, and I don't have to tell them each week. I look for your support on Board Bill Ninety-five.
All right, thank you. It's been moved and seconded, moved by Alderman from the eighth, seconded by Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number Ninety-five. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Orpman.
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Florida.
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmid. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter.
No.
Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed.
Present.
Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Cone. Twenty-two, aye votes, four no votes, one present.
By your vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the eighth, and third read and finally passed Board Bill Number Ninety-five.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills sixty-three, eighty-two, fifty-one, seventy, seventy-six, twenty, seventy-one, seventy-two, committee substitute, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, forty-eight, fifty-five, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, sixty-six, ninety-four, and ninety-five.
All other business being suspended, the President shall, in open session, affix this signature here too, to the end that these may become law. I move for adoption on current resolution calendar, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderwoman from the first. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. First reading resolution.
Resolution Ninety-nine sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, President Reed, and Alderwoman Ingracia. The Board of Aldermen urges voters to vote no on amendment and at the election to be held on August the fifth, two thousand and fourteen, the sales and use tax increases that would be imposed by the passage of Amendment Seven are excessive, unfair, harmful, and to the wrong priority for the state of Missouri and the city of St. Louis.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize on the first reading Resolution Number Ninety-nine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd like to request that the Clerk read Resolution Ninety-nine, please.
Madam Clerk, please read Resolution Number Ninety-nine.
Resolution Ninety-nine, whereas voters will be deciding on Missouri consti- constitutional amendment number seven at the election to be held on August the fifth, two thousand and fourteen, and whereas Amendment Seven increases both state sales and use taxes by three-fourths percent for ten years to create a fund controlled by the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission to be used for transportation improvements, and whereas the six billion dollars or more that will be collected from the proposed sales tax, sales and use tax increase is the largest tax increase in the history of the state of Missouri, and whereas this increase would result in a general sales tax rate in the city of St. Louis climbing to nine point four-two-nine percent with the, with the rate in special districts as high as eleven point four-two-nine percent. And whereas the tax increase is excessive, considering that the vast majority of funds from this tax will be used to build highways, bridges, and growing a state highway system that is already one of the most expansive in the nation. And whereas St. Louis and Kansas City metropolitan regions already have the most freeway pavement per capita of any large metropolitan area in the nation and also have the lowest rate of highway congestion, and whereas the burden of this tax increase will fall most heavily on families, seniors, and those with modest incomes, and small businesses rather than on the users of the highway system, and whereas the trucking industry, which does the most damage to roads and bridges, is exempt from state and local sales, local sales and use taxes. And whereas because Amendment Seven prohibits the increase in motor fuel taxes and the imposition of tolls, those who benefit the most from this huge tax increase will pay virtually none of it, both now and, and likely forever. And whereas the Missouri General Assembly in the last session approved legislation that will reduce income taxes for the highest earners, and whereas the state of Missouri is cutting budgets for essential services like education, safety, social services, and healthcare, and whereas claims, claims that Amendment Seven will produce thousands of permanent jobs and improve safety are completely unsubstantiated and greatly exaggerated. And whereas the city of St. Louis has proposed a number of potentially beneficial projects that could be paid for with the proceeds of the sales tax increase, and whereas the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission will be solely responsible for deciding how the sales tax proceeds will be spent, and whereas the portion of the sale, proposed sales tax increase paid by the citizens and businesses in the city of St. Louis will be greater than the portion of the expenditures to be made in the city, and whereas the continued expansion of the highway system in suburban areas of the state will encourage unsubstantial development patterns that are harmful to the St. Louis region and the city of St. Louis. And whereas the sales tax increase will diminish the future fiscal capacity of the city by limiting, limiting the use of this revenue source to meet future needs for essential services, support for Metro, and the expansion of MetroLink. And whereas Amendment Seven is opposed by the Missouri Municipal League, the St. Louis County Municipal League, the League of Women Voters, the Sierra Club, Missouri Coalition for the Environment, and many other groups whose interests are generally aligned with the city of St. Louis, and whereas any benefit to the city of St. Louis of the sales tax increase are uncertain and largely outweighed by the cost to its citizens and businesses. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis, that the sales and use tax increases that would be imposed by the passage of amendment are excessive, unfair, harmful, and the wrong priority for the state of Missouri and the city of St. Louis. Be it further resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis, urges voters to vote no on Amendment Seven at the election to be held on August the fifth, two thousand and fourteen, introduced on the eleventh day of July, two thousand and fourteen by Honorable Scott Ogilvy, Alderman the twenty-fourth Ward, Honorable Louis E. Reed, President of the Board of Aldermen, and Honorable Christine Ingracia, Alderwoman of the sixth ward.
Alderman from twenty-fourth.
Thank you. I, um, I move we refer, um, Resolution Ninety-nine to the Transportation Committee.
Move by Alderman from twenty-fourth, second by Alderwoman from the sixth. Alderman from twenty-fourth, please proceed.
Well, the resolution mostly says it all, I think. Uh, this is the, this is a huge tax increase, or would be a huge tax increase, in the state of Missouri, focuses on the wrong priorities, builds the wrong projects, builds projects actually harmful to the city of St. Louis. Um, we have, we have fifty years of history in the city of St. Louis of, of mode, uh, building highways that have depopulated our city, that have pulled residents away. There's been no population growth, uh, between St. Louis City, St. Louis County, and St. Charles. There are no more people living in those three counties combined than there were in nineteen seventy, and yet we've spent billions expanding the highway system. Amendment Seven would continue to add more, more lanes of highways, uh, throughout the region. It's, it's wasteful, it's the wrong priority, and it will not benefit the city. It'll take our sales tax to almost nine and a half percent, almost eleven and a half percent in certain areas of the city, and it, it's, it's really nothing more, um, than a huge subsidy to the trucking and, and concrete industries, uh, particularly the trucking industry who would pay nothing more. A freight truck would pay nothing more to drive across the state. The whole thing is, is, is really, uh, it's just another example of, I think, the state of Missouri actively working against the best interest of both the city of St. Louis and really a large part of St. Louis County as well.
All right, thank you.
I renew my motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Alderman from twenty-second.
Yes, Mr. President, members of board, I just had a thought as I was sitting here reading the resolution, and I certainly support the intent of the resolution, and here's my concern. From a procedural standpoint, I'm concerned that we may be violating the state statute of campaign financing laws if we're using public funding materials or any other media to advance a valid issue because the state statute is kind of clear about you not doing that, so I'm just not sure if it'd be appropriate. So I'd like somebody to clarify that for me because I just wouldn't want us to go down the wrong path.
No, it's, it's perfectly legal for this board, uh, through the issuance of a resolution to state its, its intention and to state its position, and that's what this resolution should do. Uh, the Alderman from the twenty-fourth has moved that we refer to committee for further discussion, so before it would, you know, be accepted as the official position of this board, it will have to go to committee and then come back out.
Okay, I just wanted to ask the question before we got too far, so thank you for clarifying.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved, it's been moved by Alderman from twenty-fourth, second by Alderman from the sixth, that we refer Resolution Number Ninety-nine to Transportation Committee. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Orpman.
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard.
Pass.
Alderwoman Florida.
Pass.
Alderwoman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmid.
Please.
Ald-
For it to committee. This is just to refer to committee, yeah. Yes. This is just to refer to committee, yeah.
Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Cohn. Twenty-six, aye votes, two present.
By your vote, you stand the motion. Alderman from the 24th. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution 99 to Transportation.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
With dispensal line item 22, Ms. Lance, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
There are no meetings scheduled for next week. That's the extent of my announcements.
I also want to just thank everyone who showed up here today. I know, you know, I really appreciate you guys taking an interest in the legislative process. It makes a difference when you get involved. So, thank you so much for coming today, and thank you so much for your interest. Ladies and everybody, let's give them a round of applause for standing, for coming. I really appreciate it. Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, I did see another special guest that came in here. I don't know if he's still here. And that is Mr. Joe Palm, the committee man from the mighty 26th Ward, who has been a personal friend of mine. And we've mentored him for a lot of years. And he is a, what is his other title? I should have it. It is the Minority Director of, oh, I'm saying it wrong. Director of Office of Minority Health. And I should know that because that's on his voicemail. And he comes to my ward quite often to talk to the citizens about health. And one of his best sayings he has is that without your health, you don't have anything. And that is so important, and especially in African-American community, where we have a lot of health issues that are diabetes, sickle cell anemia, high blood pressure, so, heart disease. So, I enjoy that Joe is so available from the governor's office to make sure that we are up to date on whatever's going on in the minority health field. And I want, I appreciate him.
All right, thank you. Sorry about that. Alderman from the 24th.
Mr. President, I also want to recognize the folks that came here today. I appreciate you coming down and showing your voice. You've done that before, and your presence does make a difference. So, thank you for coming down. Yeah, give them another round of applause. And as a announcement too, tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the O'Fallon Park Rec Complex, we will be having the O'Fallon Neighborhood Meeting. Ms. Everett and the crew will be there. Then at 3:00 o'clock also in O'Fallon Park, there will be a dedication of a new playground dedicated to one of O'Fallon Neighborhood's greatest citizens, Ms. Shirley Ann Williams, who passed away some years ago.
Excellent. Congratulations. Any further announcements? Any further, Alderman from the 8th. So, you left and then you came back. Go ahead.
Due to the fact that the, that the Resolution 99 was put into the Transportation Committee and that we don't know if and when we're going to have any special sessions, I'm going to go ahead and call a Transportation Committee hearing for Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. and they will take up that resolution for Alderman Ogilvy.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Alderman, Alderwoman from the 19th?
Mr. President and members of the board, I have a few. But they're all good. I want to first thank the Urban League and the St. Louis Community Empowerment Foundation for sponsoring an energy conservation seminar, along with the assistance and support of Ameren, the Klee Gas, St. Louis Area Aging, and a number of others. But it was fabulous because I learned things about conserving energy. And there were over 150 people there, which was good for our community to get those resources to them. And I just wanted to say thank you for quite a successful event. I also wanted to recognize and announce that the African Despereaux Council, and I think you had a chance to meet them when they were here, and the ambassador from Ghana was here. This, next Friday, the 18th, they will have their dinner and seminar at Bosley Hall on Harris Stowe Campus. On the 19th, they'll start off that morning, Saturday morning, with a walk in Tower Grove Park. And then at 10:00, we'll come over to the Harris Stowe Campus and we'll have a soccer game. And it will become an annual soccer game. And we will issue a Nelson Mandela Cup because it will be recognizing his birthday. So, that will be an annual event from this point on. The new president of Harris Stowe is participating, and he will be there. Tickets can be purchased at the sites. So, if you want to go to the dinner, you purchase your tickets at Bosley Hall. If you want to do the walk, you can purchase there. If you want to see the game, you can purchase there. But I think it's great, and we have five ambassadors coming from various countries in Africa that will be present. So, I think they've done a yeoman's job in bringing St. Louis into the forefront and bringing the communications together. And lastly, very quickly, the Back to School Fair that is held at Shavas Arena will take place on August 2nd. That's a Saturday, and it's looking like it's going to be bigger and better than ever. And we ask people to come out and participate. If you want to have a booth for information for our community, it is free. So, just call St. Louis Public Schools, and we have it on our community calendar here at the city of St. Louis. And so, that information is available online. And lastly, for those who don't know, this is National Hot Dog Month. So, go out and support our vendors. We got one here, right here at City Hall. In the 25th Ward, they got a great restaurant that Stevie runs that sells great hot dogs and a number of other places around the city. So, make sure you buy a hot dog. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. On July the 19th, at Tandy Community Center in the park, Homer Phillips Senior Living Facility will be having their annual picnic. On July the 19th, on Cora and Martin Luther King in the Field of Dreams, there will be a chicken wing eating contest. I'm sure all of you would like to be involved. July the 19th, there will be the Moorish Festival on Sarah and St. Louis Avenue. And also, July the 19th, Riddick School Reunion will be in the 4th Ward on Martin Luther King and Whittier. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further, Alderman from the 22nd?
Members of the board, on August, I'm sorry, July the 26th, we will have our community picnic out at Bear Brothers Park from noon to 4:00 p.m. On July 26th, the 22nd Ward throws annual picnic every year. But it's open to everybody, not just 22nd Ward residents. We like to think that a lot of people, at one point in time in their life, lived in the neighborhood. So, we welcome back to just kind of hang out and have a good time. Also, on July 29th, the 22nd Ward will have its regular scheduled meeting from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 at the Omega Center, 3900 Goodfellow. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. July 26th, also, People's Clinic will be holding their Back to School Affair. And it's located at the People Clinic Meeting, I mean, facility on their parking lot. Also, we'll be having our ward meetings the last Thursday of each month with the 26th Ward. As always, the last 30, 6:30 at 11:41 bell. And in July, we will have a free concert in Avon Perry Park. That will be the 4th Sunday, starting at 6:00. It'll be a free jazz concert in July. Also, in August, the 4th Sunday, there'll be another free concert in July, I mean, in August with the Avon Perry Park. And also, on that same date, approximately 1:00 to 4:00, Avon Perry Park, on that 4th Sunday, we'll have our Back to School Affair from the 26th Ward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, the Alderman from the 8th said, "I like to get up and talk about how I work so hard." I do work hard because I'm the only alderperson here in history that was illegally gerrymandered and ward taken up when I didn't lose population and had to come back and take my ward back. So, it is not in the shape that I left it. Now, the Alderman from the 8th knows about that because he was one of those group of white aldermen who had a white meeting to tear my ward up. So, if he's going to speak to why I have to speak to how hard I work, because much of the people that's sitting over here right now, those used to be my constituents, okay? They used to be part of the 20th Ward, okay? So, yes, I do talk about how hard because I want all those people who voted for that mess to know how hard it is to come back here and stand down here and have to represent a ward that's very different. But don't worry, because all this summer, I'm going to be working on that lawsuit with the city. And hopefully, maybe the Alderman from the 8th will know what it feels like when his ward gets tore up and divided into seven different wards. And then let him try to come back and represent a ward after 10 years, in which people don't know what they're doing, and they've destroyed the very essence of many of the things that we had in place. So, yes, I talk about how hard I work. I do work. I worked twice as hard as I did 10 years ago because we had our things in order in the 20th Ward. Didn't lose population. And instead of the Alderman from the 8th and other people coming and saying, "How did you do that?" When all around me, 4,500 people in the 22nd Ward, 4,500 in the 4th Ward, 3,800 in the 18th Ward, 2,000, 3,000 in the 21st Ward. Instead of applauding that effort that I was doing, my community was rewarded by tearing it up into six, seven different wards and dividing it into it so that they could have freshmen aldermen and taking our seniority away. And the Alderman from the 8th and the rest of the people who participated in that are not going to get away from that. That's called gerrymandering. It's illegal gerrymandering. We lost 30% of white population in 2001 and gained white aldermen. We continue to gain in black population but lose black representation. So, the Alderman ought to be aware that he has white privilege so he doesn't have to talk about the things because he kept his seniority. He kept his number. And so, he was able to go on and represent his ward, and his people did not have their vote taken away for seven years. So, if he doesn't like what I say, let him walk a day in my shoes, then come and talk to me.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. Any, any further announcements? Any further announcements? No further announcements? Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, I move that we excuse the alderperson from the 25th Ward for their necessary, for his necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the 17th, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by the alderman from the 6th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.